I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Would you please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
No problem. I think everyone's still recovering from that last meeting.
Councillor Zarela.
Here.
Councillor Boshman.
Present.
Councillor Kuchar.
Here.
Councillor Craig.
Here.
Councillor Cruz.
Here.
Councillor Dean Talley.
Councillor Fleming.
Councillor Green.
Here.
Councillor Schultz.
Here.
Councillor Van Helsingen.
Here.
And Councillor Walsh.
Here.
We have nine members present.
Thank you very much. We have no one logged in remotely for public forum. If there was, if there is anyone here with us this evening who would like to participate in public forum, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak. And you may then speak on that item for not more than two minutes. All right, seeing none, our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, June 13th, 2024, from 4 until 5:30 PM in room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. The first monthly meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group at the Pittsburgh Senior Center, 14 Wallace Avenue, will take place Thursday, June 6th, 2024, this Thursday, from 2:30 until 4:00 PM in the card room, again, in the senior center, 14 Wallace Avenue. Bonnie Shaler and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. This initial monthly meeting at the Pittsburgh Senior Center is, in addition to the regular meeting of the group at the University Recreation Center, the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will continue to meet every other Thursday at the Pittsburgh State University Rec. Center unless otherwise noticed. Ah, noted, sorry. The City of Pittsburgh has been approved for a grant that allows us to greatly subsidize the cost of backyard composting bins. These bins are great for anyone with a garden or even those with indoor plants. Backyard composting is a great way to help alleviate the waste going to our quickly filling landfills while providing nutrient-rich fertilizer for home planting. The bins are made of recycled plastics and have easy-to-read assembly instructions available in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. You must be a resident of Pittsburgh to qualify, and there is a limit of two per household. Compost bin pickups will be at City Hall by arrangement during the months of June and July, and you will be, you will receive an email notifying you when they are available and when your pickup date is. If there are any questions, they can be referred, they can be referred to Sean Michael or Jean Francois at the Board of Health, BoardofHealth@FitzburgMA.gov, or 978-829-1870. Monday, June 10th, this coming Monday, at 6:00 PM, there will be a community conversation about pets here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh. Present will be Pittsburgh Animal Control Officer Todd Pickett, Nicole Roberts of Ahimsa Animal, Ahimsahaven Animal Rescue, members of Street Cat Angels, City Councilor Sally Craig, and other members of the City Council, and the Be Positive Therapy Pets. You can join residents and animal advocates for presentation and conversation about animal issues in Pittsburgh, including an overpopulation of stray cats who are dehydrated and malnourished, and a large number of unclaimed stray dogs in our city. Light refreshments and the Therapause Pet Teams will be present, and that is this coming Monday, June 10th, at 6:00 PM here in this building.
One more announcement on the yellow paper about...
I have that.
Thank you. Excellent.
The Ward Three meeting will be held here, in the Legislative Building, June 20th at 6:00 PM, hosted by Ward Three Councillor Andrew Kuchar. And on Tuesday, June 18th, at the Pittsburgh Historical Society, 781 Main Street, at 11:00 AM, there will be a meeting of people interested in creating a Friends Group for Forest Hill Cemetery. For more information, contact Councillor Craig.
Where's your...
Thank you. Next, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Councillor Kuchar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We had two new appointments. First new appointment was Michaela E. Horn as Treasurer and Tax Collector in Training, effective June 5th, 2024, followed by official appointment as Treasurer and Tax Collector on June 22nd, 2024, for a term to expire June 22nd, 2027, and that was unanimously approved. The next new appointment was for a full-time special police officer to the Pittsburgh Police Department, James Archipretti. Yeah, I got that one right this time. And that was unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. We'll take these one at a time because I know the chief would like to introduce our special police officer, if no one minds us going in reverse order on these.
Motion to approve the appointment of Michaela Horn.
On the motion.
Okay, so we're, we're a little out of order here. Hang on, hang on. So first off, does anyone mind us going in reverse order on this?
No.
No, all right. In that case, Chief, you can come on up.
There's only two tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great opportunity for me to introduce Detective Archipretti to the council. Jamie has served for the last 29 years for the City of Pittsburgh Police Department, and with his appointment tonight, he's going to continue to serve as a special police officer, augmenting our force during the daytime as a special police officer. Can't believe how fast 29 years went by. It seems like yesterday he joined the department, but he has served the city with distinction in many, many different roles. We're going to miss him. It's going to be tough to fill that type of expertise, especially in our investigative units, but I'm happy for him as he moves on into the next chapter of his life, and we wish him the very best, and I thank the Appointments Committee for their support tonight as long, as well as the full council. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. Can I entertain a motion on...
Make a motion, you said.
Second.
All right. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. All right, it is approved. Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll hold off on the swearing-in until we conclude the report of the Appointments Committee, if that's all right. Councillor Boshman, on the Appointments Committee.
I'd like to ask the, the new treasurer if I can ask a question there.
Not there yet.
This would be the, the time when you have leeway to do that.
I'd like to ask her a question.
If you're willing, or you can take a seat if you'd prefer. It's up to you.
My question to you is this, I only heard part of it because I was outside, I was trying to listen. I heard you talking to my councillor left about land taking, somebody not paying in taxes. The law is starting to change on it according to what I've been reading in the paper, and the great case was the girl, the lady in Worcester, where they took her money, her house for $38,000, and the guy that bought it sold it for $300,000, and she lost all that money, over $38,000. And there was other places they gave examples throughout the Commonwealth, saying they're trying to change the law, so how are we going to do that if we're going to say you can't take it?
So, councillor, I apologize. This would be the time to ask her questions about, about herself, about her background, about, you know, her fit for the role. Any conversation about what the Treasury Department needs to do going forward would be for another time, although I will say I'm familiar with what you're talking about, and I've discussed it with our current treasurer, and they're on top of it.
Are they on top of it?
Yes.
All right.
Do you have any questions for our nominee regarding...
I'm afraid that if I say anything, I may hear people smiling, so I better not.
Well, that, that's good to refrain then. Okay. Any other questions on this appointment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any objections? All right, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we'll have our swearing-in.
Just like 29 years ago.
I do solemnly promise this today that I am faithfully and impartially and to the best of my loyalty and belief perform this charge, all things incumbent upon me as a special police officer. Good to see you, Pittsburgh. So, I...
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You can always go pop in your office.
Congratulations again.
Got that figured out?
I met, I met him.
And I hope you enjoy your semi-retirement.
Congratulations. Thank you for continuing, sir.
Thanks for... I met you about 25 years ago, the BNE at my house, remember? We came in at nighttime. You never called.
Congratulations on your retirement as well.
Maybe he knows how to retire better than you.
That's a true story.
I doubt it.
I had my breaking in BNE in California, in LA. First weekend I moved in, someone broke into my house, my apartment. I called a couple weeks later, get the update, never even filed a report. Gave me a, gave me like my...
Oh, man, I would have photobomb that one for sure.
Well, that, that's why I'm over in this seat.
Apparently the right side is for bad behavior. Whatever.
Those are my friends, my kids. Really, because they're in great, and we want them.
All right, thank you, everyone. Report of the Committee on Records, Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, President Zarela. We have examined the records, and they appear to be in order.
Move to a second.
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 I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, the report of the Committee on Records is unanimously approved. Next, we have a new appointment letter from Her Honor, the Mayor, of James M. Bunle as Tree Warden for the City of Pittsburgh, term to expire June 4th, 2027, and we have a request for suspension of the rules on this item.
Move for suspension.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Is there any objection? All right, then we will take this by unanimous consent, and it is now before us. James, you're certainly welcome to come up if you'd like to.
I know, I didn't turn up, but I'll give you one.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, Councillor Boshman.
My question to Mr. James for now, is there going to be an increase in pay?
I'm not...
It's a good question.
No, I'm not 100% sure. I do know that in the DPW, you, local 170... Nick, can you help me out?
So, in, for the record, Nicholas Erickson, Commissioner of Public Works, City of Pittsburgh. So, in the local 170 union contract, there's a stipend for the position of tree warden of, I believe, $650 per year for the person that fills that role. However, James is not in that union, and the union that he's in doesn't have any stipulations for a stipend or any increase in pay for taking this role. My suggestion, and we'll have to work this out with the mayor and the finance team and all that, is to give James that same stipend that would otherwise be offered to the local 170 employee. I think that's only fair. Regardless of the compensation, James has volunteered to take on this role without the expectation of any salary increase, which is commendable.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to vote for... Do I still have the floor?
Sorry, you have, you still have the floor.
I'm going to vote for, with the understanding that I don't want to see a stipend, because, you know, it's only $600, and they're going to make them, break them. So, no offense to you, James.
I appreciate it. Basically going to be covering the gas, driving around and checking on all the trees.
He's coming in wide, too.
All set, councillor?
I'm all done. Yep, I yield the floor.
Councillor Kuchar.
Thank you very much. James, thank you for stepping up and doing this. I've had numerous questions by residents on Stickney Road, numerous areas, you know, there, there's planned tree cutting, what's going on? I've reached out to the city, and the city was like, I have no idea, we don't have a tree warden, you know, what, we don't, we can't answer that question until we get one. But thank you for stepping up, and we're going to be, you know, in conversation quite a bit, trying to get the information that I've been searching for, for the past couple of months. So I want to thank you for stepping up, and you definitely have my approval, even with the stipend.
Thank you.
Councillor Craig.
Sure. No, I'd just like to add my voice to the chorus of Councillor Boshman. Thank you, thank you for stepping up. The role of tree warden, for those who aren't aware, is the person who makes the decision as to whether a city tree is removed or not removed. I know a lot of, everyone here has had conversations about trees that have concerned residents, so you are stepping, literally stepping into a forest in terms of interest, and I look forward to speaking to you about this new role soon, and I, I think, I, again, you know, additional stipend, I know we're, I, I know we're, that things are in flux right now, especially during this budget season, but thank you for that. And also, I guess, I think we missed an announcement because DPW Day is Wednesday, June 12th.
I do not have that on here, but I will...
I was going to mention it afterwards, that's my fault.
No, by all means, if you'd like to mention it briefly now, just so everyone can hear while they're listening, hopefully at home and so forth.
Sure, so just a reminder, the award-winning DPW Day is on Wednesday, June 12th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Coolidge Park. The Police Department, Fire Department, Water, Wastewater, Parks, DPW, Pittsburgh Public Schools, I think Be Positive is going to be there.
We will be there.
A big sand pile, so you can play in, in, in the sand, which is always a good time. DigSafe was very generous and provided of a whole bunch of goodie bags. We got the little construction hats. You guys are all more than welcome to have one. We have a variety of different colors as well. Stickers, bracelets, you name it. We got it for, for the kids in the community to come and enjoy this annual free event.
If I may.
You still have the floor.
Police, police and fire are also participating, I believe, did you...
Yes, I said them.
Oh, sorry, missed that. Okay. Thanks.
I was counting, I had my fingers going.
What were the times on that, James?
It's 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, rain or shine. And if you don't follow the Parks and Recreation on Facebook, that's a great place to get all these updates as well. Put that little plug in there.
Councillor Schultz.
Yeah, I just had a question, James. Are you going to be sharing the tree warden duties with other people in the, in the department? Because I heard that that might be the case because you're such a busy man with the Parks Department.
So, the fortunate thing, I have a great team to work with, not only my Parks crew, my, my small Parks crew, but even at the DPW with Streets and the Streets Commissioner, Jeff, Jeff Hillman. So, the, as the tree warden, I am allowed to appoint deputy tree wardens, and there will be some appointments of deputy tree wardens that we will be able to, the main goal behind it is to, to obviously better serve the community with a little more structure. But I want to be able to, when, you know, wintertime when Jeff is busy, and my, a little more of a slower season for me, it's kind of like a swap where I can go out and, and service and look at the trees, and the same with having someone in my Parks crew, and I believe I'm going to be asking someone in community development as well, Ms. Hurley. So we're going to have a, a, a good-sized team to help and assess the trees in the city and, and manage that appropriately, just even getting back to the people that are putting out the requests and saying, you know, is this, can you come cut this tree down, and figuring out if it's on their property, if it's not on their property, you know, getting visits by lovely councillors that, that tell me that, you know, trees are old, they need to come down, it's falling apart, that, which is never a problem. I'm happy to help, you know, the city, but I want to make it, you know, manageable in a systematic approach to handle the vast space that we have in the City of Pittsburgh and do it as efficiently and effective as, as we possibly can. Also, as tree warden, I do want to, there's some programs with the Arbor Day Foundation to be recognized as a Tree City USA, shows that the city is reaching towards an environmentally sound tree impact, so there are different things in getting a tree inventory, just things like that. I feel like that having in the city would not only enhance people with the knowledge for people in the community, but also having these different recognitions or paperwork and reports would allow the city to go and pursue more financial funding from outside sources as well.
Do we have any funds left before July 1st to take any trees down, James, or do we have to wait till after July?
I know we're working on a new tree contractor. I'm not sure entirely of what's remaining in that, if there is anything in that to cut down trees, if there is, I'll be looking to get those new people moving on the ground to remove some, some limbs and some of the trees that I, I know that have been sitting in my, a sticky note on my desk for a while.
When, when will that contract be awarded to the tree company?
I gotta call Nick back up.
So, a couple answers. So there's, there is some funding remaining in the line item for tree removal within DPW Streets. The issue that we have is that the contractor that we had previously that's been assigned a few tasks, he hasn't sent us his, his latest invoice, so we're still waiting on that last invoice to figure out exactly how much funding is remaining. With the new contractor, we're working on getting all the contract docs executed right now. They should be on board in, in a matter of a couple of weeks, but really, we have to wait till that last invoice comes from Flag before we can figure out how much we have remaining to assign new work this fiscal year to the new tree contractor. And then obviously, after July 1st, the budget cycle will refresh, and we'll be able to go back at the, the backlog that we've got built up.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yep.
Councillor Green.
Thank you, James. It is always a pleasure to, to work with you and your department. My question is, how, based on the overwhelming amount of trees that either are questionable or that need to be removed, do you have a sense yet of how much will be able to be done in-house with the DPW versus being awarded to the new contractor?
I don't yet. I'm still as, just recently as today, hopefully being appointed or being approved tonight. I, I just started to get the See Click Fix notifications, and some of them, and I do apologize to the members of the community, they, they posted, you know, haven't heard since October, I've posted this the second time. Obviously, with the changeover in, in the tree warden position, that I do apologize for them not receiving any contact or any information. Like I said, my goal is to streamline it a little bit better, have specific days where we go out to look at trees during the week rather than try to do it every day, you know, try to make a schedule up, and, and the people in the community will be informed of that to try to assess and, and approach it in a, in a systematic way to be, like I said, efficient as possible. So I, I'm trying to answer that question as best I can, but right now I don't have all of the tree requests yet. I, I'm not looking forward to getting that list. But when I, when I do, we'll, like I said, we'll come up with a plan, and we'll approach it and handle it as, as fast and efficiently as we possibly can.
All right. Thank you. I'll see you Wednesday.
Motion to approve. I've still got one person who hasn't spoken yet, if you don't mind. Councillor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no issue with this. I'm glad we're going to get somebody in this position, get this role filled, I think it's an important one in the city. Greg, with Ron, you don't need to be a certified arborist to be a tree warden, right?
That is correct. So there are, well, on that side, I am signing up to take the appropriate classes, and also every other year, they have the Tree Warden Association of Massachusetts offers like, it's not like a crash course, it's actually, it's a condensed schooling for new tree wardens, but it's all, like I said, it's offered every other year, it was actually just offered this past September, so we have to wait a year, but I, in speaking with a representative from DCR who helped with the training of the trees that were planted all over the place today at Coolidge, he, he said that you, as long as you have worked in and around trees and had management skills, you, you qualify yourself to be a tree warden, and then putting yourself and signing up to take the classes, the courses, and everything like that to further your education, to better serve your community, you're on the right path. And I said, oh, I have no problem doing that. I've always, whatever profession I've been in, the more add, more tools that I can add to my toolbox, not only it helps me, but it helps the people around me, the people that I serve.
That's great to hear. Thank you for doing that. I have, like my colleagues, I have some more questions, but I think I'll let you get up to speed first. I yield the floor. I'm looking to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and second. On the motion, Councillor Boshman.
On the motion. I got one quick question. I just want to know, maybe it's the right question, maybe not. He's the tree warden, but I don't understand when they cut down, when Unitil cuts down the trees and additionally have a big stump, why wouldn't that, as a city town, remove it?
So that's, that's a little far afield from what we're voting on right now.
Oh, but I know, but it's costing this money.
I know that, but it's also got nothing to do with the appointment of Mr. Bunle as tree warden, so, believe me, I have no problem putting the screws to Unitil, it's just tonight is not the night to do that.
All right.
Any other comments on the motion? All right, any objections? All right, it is unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have three tie agreements from community development. If no one on the council objects, I will waive the reading, and those will stand referred to economic development. All right. And then we have a special presentation from Pittsburgh Creative City Partnership. We have Audrey Pendleton Chow and Derek Craig. You guys can approach, make yourselves comfortable either at the podium or at the tables, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Audrey has handouts. I do not know if we printed out enough. Also, the handout is not like super, super pertinent, there's a lot of pages, a lot of text, so it's like, it's a passive text, it's more so homework. Homework, yes. So, hi, my name is Derek Craig, I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, and I am here today presenting this, this presentation informational session is kind of long overdue for our city councillors who may or may not be familiar with the Pittsburgh Creative City Partnership and/or the Creative City Grant Program as it stands today, June 4th, 2024. Creative Cities was awarded to Pittsburgh two years ago in the springtime of 2022, and around the fall-wintertime, I was hired as the Grant Program Manager, and since then, we have deployed some of the $550,000 that was awarded to the City of Pittsburgh specifically to leverage arts and culture for economic development, to a little old... All right. Any objections? All right. It is unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next, we have three tie agreements from community development. If no one on the council objects, I will waive the reading and those will stand referred to economic development. All right. And then we have a special presentation from Fitchburg Creative City Partnership. We have Audrey Pendleton Chow and Derek Craig. You guys can approach, make yourselves comfortable either at the podium or at the tables. And we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Audrey has handouts. I do not know if we printed out enough. Also, the handout is not like super, super pertinent. There's a lot of pages, a lot of text. So it's like, it's a passive text. It's more so homework. Homework, yes. So hi, my name is Derek Craig. I'm a resident of Fitchburg. And I am here today presenting this, uh, this presentation informational session is kind of long overdue for our city counselors who may or may not be familiar with the Fitchburg Creative City Partnership and/or the Creative City Grant Program as it stands today, June 4th, 2024. Creative Cities was awarded to Fitchburg two years ago in the springtime of 2022. And around the fall, winter time, I was hired as the grant program manager. And since then, we have deployed some of the $550,000 that was awarded to the city of Fitchburg specifically to leverage arts and culture for economic development to a little over 52 projects through our Dream and Creative Grant Program. Last year, we launched a large festival called the Fitchburg Arts and Culture Extravaganza, AKA FACE, as well as developed other leadership opportunities like bringing the Mass, uh, Mass Moca, can, I don't know exactly what the acronym stands for, Mass?
Museum of Modern Art.
Thank you. And they have a program called Assets for Artists where it bring, it brings artists from New England, not just Massachusetts, to different locations. And they participate in a week-long workshop. We were lucky to have them come. They use the Fitchburg Art Museum, timely, timely time as we have the Fitchburg Arts Community getting ready to open in the beginning of 2025. Amongst other things, just connecting with other leaders, cultural organizations, um, and different, different leaders within the, within the community. Through that, what has been very supportive for us has been our re-granting or what's called project implementation where we've not only been able to have a grant process, but also just be able to connect and support grassroots initiatives. Creative Cities as it stands from Mass development and set out from Mass development has, its purpose overall is to build sustainable creative infrastructure in gateway cities, supporting arts and culture as pivotal elements for local economic development. They have key strategies, which you'll see throughout the packet, where we have five program areas. Number one is place designation, which is, you know, like the naming of something, how we've taken it and, and understood it is, you know, making Fitchburg the place, this epicenter of North Central Mass, the, the region as a whole, Fitchburg being the, the nexus of arts and culture. The second thing is project implementation, which is what I just spoke about, utilizing our Dream and Creative Grant funding as well as leadership development and partnership growth. The fifth area is dedicated support for network activation. That is myself as a program manager and my support coordinator, Audrey Pendleton Chow. So in, uh, why we're here today is not only to kind of inform you of through the packet where we are, where we stand today. The grant cycle of that original two-year cycle is coming to an end in September. But in, in those 18 months and through all the success that we've, that we've garnered more, creating more attention towards arts and culture, it being more energetic amongst our institutional partners like the city of Fitchburg, Fitchburg Art Museum, Fitchburg State University, the Cultural Alliance, the Cultural Council, Historical Society, et cetera. What constantly comes up is this conversation around bandwidth and capacity. And especially in the arts and culture sector where artists are just running, 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 going, 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 they're often, they're oftentimes your thought leaders, your brain trust, the, the intelligence that you pull your ideas from. And oftentimes, a, a second thought to many of the events and entertainment, cultural vibrancy that happens in Fitchburg. And, and in that, right, like you're, we're leading a lot of, a lot of people to now take ownership, right, having more pride, garnering more sense of community, not necessarily as Fitchburg as a whole, but within whatever community means to them. And in that has expanded, you know, now we're, you know, connecting with organizations, right, throughout the Commonwealth. Why we're here today is to potentially, do I should hit this green, I should hit this green button so I knew. Anyways, uh, why we're here today is to kind of garner support from our city counselors, right, and around this idea, the, the documents that I sent is called, it calls Arts and Culture Master Plan. And I joke because there's probably about 15 to 25 pages that, that would really establish this document, right, to how we got Creative Cities, why I'm here talking to you today. And then more so at the end, it's what are our next steps? What are, what are questions? What are the common questions that amongst the people who are at the table that they're continuing to ask? What are the gaps that we're continuing to try to fill? How do we do that? What's, what's come to us most importantly is reaching out into the neighborhoods. One of the initiatives that we have that we're trying to work out now with Lizzie, I don't know if she's still here, with Lizzie's help, and we're trying to streamline the process around event organizing and throwing festivals and throwing get-togethers and what does that process look like for an everyday resident to come through and I, I want to walk through this process? And this is, these are the steps, these are the people we'll have to talk to. Most of us are just individuals, just like our other, our other fellow residents, we're very communicable with, with them. Do they know that? Are they, are they well aware of that? Are they well aware of that process? So what we're trying to get support from you all is to do, let's call them ward town meetings. And this comes around an idea not only from the Fitchburg Cultural Council's public input meetings that they hold on a yearly basis, but also this, um, the idea from the creative economy where they want to connect with other creatives, but where they are. And the ultimate goal or why, why we're presenting that we want to go to each ward, have meetings, maybe twice, maybe two per ward, because right then you, that way you know for sure. If you missed the first one, you caught the second one. Anyways, I say that because, uh, what we want to do is our, our grant program, Creative Cities has focused largely, and it is focused largely around the downtown area, around the in-town Fitchburg area, around the building of cultural district and supporting this, the, right, all, all the infrastructure that's here. However, as, as we do that, it feels like we're missing some of the outskirts of the rest of the city. And we have an initiative that we want to launch, and this is why we're here, is neighborhood block parties. And what we, what we want to do is garner people's, garner people's attention, provide our, our intent for these ward meetings, why we're here, get part, public input and see if people are interested in doing their own block party. The block party ha, let's think, a better way to put block party, Fitchburg Porch Fest. So who, like who would be interested in doing a porch fest within their community for their, their local residents? And one, right, so part of the initiatives in going into your, your wards would be, here's the process in which you would have to get permitted to even see if this is a feasible thing. The second part from a Creative City standpoint is how can we support local creatives not just coming here, but now going into, or the, these creatives coming from, stemming from these neighborhoods which, which within they live already. They don't have to leave anywhere, they're just being supported by their community. And in short, in a small, did I miss anything? In a, in a small way, it's a, it's a, it's more indicative of Fitchburg as a whole, which, you know, bringing, bringing some of these events that do take place downtown, like a civic days, and allowing the residents to organize, to communicate and bring things more, more, more to them, right? Like, all right, that's it. Questions?
Counselor Grucher.
I like the idea. In fact, Labor Day weekend, Ward Three has the West Fitchburg Road Race, which, you know, over the past couple of years, since COVID, I've been trying to grow. We, last year, we've had concerts, we have the road race. So there are many, you know, there's many things that I'm interested in maybe incorporating into this. If you want to reach out to me, we can maybe coordinate something to, you know, have Labor Day weekend, Ward Three weekend. So I'm interested, I'm definitely interested.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else with questions? Counselor Green.
I would just like to commend the efforts. There's been several of the place designations and the events that have been held through Fitchburg Creative. Creative Cities, right, partnerships that I've attended. At the table for one comes to mind, that was incredibly moving and powerful. And then, um, thank you for the work with the Fitchburg Historical Society for some of the projects that we have moving forward as well. So, you know, I, I guess my question is, how, how can we be of benefit to you to work collaboratively? You know, so that it's a give and take, so that it's not all, oh, we come to you with money requests and you give it to us and then we do our thing. So, so there's a, a collaboration between all who are sitting at the table. So I guess that's what I need to know, if you've thought about what that means and how we're going to get there. I've, I've looked through this, I've looked through the packet.
So we have thought about that. So we, what we would like help with is identifying locations, right? So if you have a location or if you already have dates that potentially could work, that would be the first thing. The, the other thing is I, I'm not sure how the, the ward committees are structured, right? But, you know, more, getting more interaction with the, the ward committees. And then the, the last thing is, right, you're, you're already in the, in these neighborhoods and you, you know who the, you know who the leaders are. And if you don't know who the leaders are, at least you know who, who is the loudest. We, like in that, and honestly, like, no, no bad idea, no bad input, no bad feedback. There is no bad feedback, right? There's no bad input. Everything is, um, there's pros and cons to all of the input. And I, there's, I want to weigh them equally, right? Like it's the success and the praise is great, but we, we actually just did a, a session, that's kind of how we, how we got here was, it was a strategic planning session is, well, what happens if this fails? How does this fail? We have a, a lack of people, right? We're not listening to how things are failing, right? How, how are we talking to each other? How do we develop new partnerships? How do we bring people into the partnerships into this, into this thing that we, we have going on today more effectively? And part of that, like I started, like I started saying, was this information session at least, what Creative Cities is trying to do, right? Thank you, Counselor, for being a part of these things. Also, you're, it's in black and white, but you're on picture. You're on slide, oh, you saw yourself. Okay. Um, and, but part, you know, part of that is that we, you know, we, myself, like, we, we haven't done as much outreach and/or we haven't got as much of outside of the downtown as we would like. And that's kind of why we're here is, uh, we want, we want your, you, the counselors are held accountable for your wards. We want to be held accountable for reaching out into the wards.
Yeah. So the reason why we're here, we want to introduce ourselves of what we do, Fitchburg Creative City Partnership, or Fitchburg Creative for short. But also because we want to do these ward meetings, we wanted the ward counselors' help of not only finding hotspots of like where do people hang out in your ward, but also helping being like ambassadors of, hey, the, there's this meeting that's happening and it can be a bit of an info session on our neighborhood block party grants, as well as other opportunities if the Cultural Council wants to do a little bit of a public input. It doesn't, and, you know, it's just like a way to get the community together and start jogging their mind. And part, one of our other aspects that we focus on is leadership development. So that's what Derek was talking about, like, you know, we have a lot of leaders coming from the downtown area, focusing a lot on downtown, but let's, let's get some more people involved from the different parts of Fitchburg and, um, you know, there's a lot of burnout and so we need more leaders.
And also more, more intersectional work, uh, you know, just, that's one of the, the things about Creative Cities, they have, you know, they talk about breaking down silos. And even amongst the arts and culture organizations, their silos, right? Even in their partnership, even in them working together, it might not be as seamless as it could be. One of the things that like, you know, are, which I feel like has gotten better is that synergy with having a dedicated person and having multiple people in, in strategic places that are specifically focused on specific tasks, right? So, and a lot of that, uh, you know, like if James needs help with deputy tree wardens, right? Like, I'm sure there's, there's somebody who's thinking about it who is like, hmm, you know what, we should, and, you know, how, how can we, how can we use this opportunity to, you know, get people, get the, get our community to think not just arts and culture as visual arts or dance or you name it, but, you know, we have a bunch of food, we have a bunch of barber shops, we have people who do graphic design, we have a lot of things that you would, that are within the arts and culture sector. And a lot of those things are thriving here in Fitchburg.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, President Zerella. I want to commend Derek and Audrey for their work on this. This is a, a great plan and for serving on the Creative City Partnership. I, I think part of what, I guess a criticism that, that we've heard is that the focus is always on downtown, downtown, what about the neighborhoods? So this is an, an actual action to, to bring in, you know, to, to expand the, the focus out into the neighborhoods, and I think that's terrific. I'm a counselor at large, but I would be more than happy to assist any of the ward counselors with any of the projects that they have in mind. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Cregan.
Great. Derek and Audrey, I, you know, when you announced that you were stepping away from the Cultural Council, I thought, oh, she's so not stepping away. She's stepping into something really exciting. And then to have Derek, who's been working on this project for a number of years and seeing things develop from your music, you know, the, the music and production and now to a wider encompassing field of vision is really great for Fitchburg. So I lived in Somerville when Porch Fest started there, and a good friend of mine is in Milwaukee, and I, I get regular reports on how Porch Fest operates there. It's amazingly low-fi in terms of like the heavy lifting. It's just a case of having the available places, having musicians willing to do what they love to do best. And I'd also like to point out that the Ward Three meeting is Thursday, June 20th, from six to seven. And I'm going to step up and say, Counselor Grucher, what do you think? Should we make some time to, if you guys are interested in speaking? Because you've got, you've got Labor Day already.
Counselor Cregan, you took the words out of my mouth. I actually raised my hand to speak, to invite these two lovely people to the June 20th Ward Three meeting. We'd love to, you know, spitball some ideas, you know, kind of get an idea because we've got to start working, Labor Day is right around the corner. You know, I've been trying to get together, maybe a, a classic car show, definitely some bands. We have the Fitchburg Military Band already scheduled, but we need to start advertising and, and making it as big as possible. So I would be very honored to have you guys come to the June 20th Ward Three meeting to discuss ideas and, you know, kind of talk about what, what we can do in Stanley Park.
Awesome. Yep. And, and what I'll do is, if, if you guys are able to confirm that, I'll make sure that it's on the flyer that goes out, that we send to the many Ward Three residents who have attended previous meetings. Also, thank you for using the picture of Counselor Green and myself from our Civil War poetry reading performance of the previously unknown Caroline Atherton Mason poem, Return of the Regiment from Fredericksburg. So we really appreciate that because Fitchburg is definitely the future, but keeping an eye on the past is what floats our boat, I think. And, you know, having seen a lot of economic development projects and at the Historical Society, you can look at them and they go back to the seventies and sixties. I mean, this has always been a part of like who we are. But to see the focus on the arts, yes, absolutely. Yep. We're, we're there. We look forward to seeing you on the 20th.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of working with Audrey under Cultural Council, and I have full faith and confidence in, but looking to connect with you, I think we both have at some point, so it's a great opportunity. And I'm, I'm absolutely ready to, to bring, invite you both to Ward Six at some point and discuss further how we can branch out because as, as great as that we're all, our focus on the downtown, it would be important, I think, to highlight some of the, the rich things we have in Ward Six. We have an award-winning tattoo shop on Airport Road, you know, we have things to, to highlight as well and, and people willing to, to jump in and be a part of it. So I'm really happy to collaborate with the both of you on seeing this through. Yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo the, the praise and thanks. You know, you guys are doing great work and I hope to see more of it. I'm, I'm not a hugely artsy and/or cultured guy, but I, but I love to see it. So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to.
Do you, uh, do you know any entertainment lawyers?
Unfortunately, no.
All right, well.
Not, not quite my, my scope, but, uh, but no, I think it's.
I'd be willing to walk down that road.
Sorry?
I'd be willing to walk down that road.
Yeah?
Sounds like a song.
But definitely anything that, it sounds like I can speak for the council. When I say anything we can do to help, let us know. And personally too, I may, I may not be an artsy and/or cultured person, but I'll help in whatever way I can. If, you know, if you can think of something, reach out.
Will do.
Yep.
Yeah, keep an eye out for our email from us.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much for presenting this to us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
Report of the City Property Committee. Counselor Cregan.
Yes, mere moments before we met, we had four items on our agenda, and these included the 305 Main Street, the. the 305 Main Street, the utility easement needed to provide fire suppression, that passed unanimously. Second item was the land disposition agreement on 84 Elm Street, and we authorized the mayor to purchase said property, so we're working with the state. And community development, Liz Murphy is overseeing this real transition for our beautiful courthouse at 84 Elm. The next item was 84 North Street, which is a unbuildable piece of property, which is abutted entirely by Fitchburg State University. This was voted that we hold this, may be subject to potential revision. Finally, the rail trail takings. We approved the funding for the takings, so it'll be before us tonight. Department of Transportation required this vote. And that is, again, our rail trail is a measurable value in terms of what it symbol, what it is, but also what it symbolizes, the way it connects to Lemonster, and the complexity of the package I looked at for this was just beyond. I mean, it was like, it was like an electrical grid and like a nuclear power plant, and then like a, you know, a geographic map, like, all wrapped into one. So the, that was a, yep, that was unanimous. Other members of City Property comments? Have they covered it all?
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second. I have a motion and second, to accept the report and recommendations of the City Property Committee. If there are no objections, all right, it passes unanimously.
Thank you. Also like to say thank you to City Solicitor Lisa Mead and Community Development Director Liz Murphy for coming and presenting to us tonight, and also Counselor Green, who is writing up our minutes. So those will be coming along shortly, and we will pass those at the next City Property meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. Counselor Gennatali is not here this evening, so I'll walk us through it. In the interest of time, I would ask that anyone, I'll note that the first three items all passed four to one with Counselor Gennatali in dissent, and the remainder all passed unanimously. If there is any particular item that counselors would like to discuss or ask questions about, someone let me know. Otherwise, I would ask that we waive the reading of the full report.
Mr. President, could you?
Counselor Brochman.
Not read every one, but just give a brief synopsis to the public so they, so they know what the heck's going on.
I can do that.
You don't have to read every one, just give.
Yep, I can do that. So 10924 was a state health grant in the amount of approximately $1.66 million for the Monmouth Public Health Network. That passed four to one. 11024 was another state public health grant to support further MPHN activities, specifically in this case, disease investigation, passed four to one, for $360,000. A determination of need grant from UMass Memorial in the amount of $10,000 to provide free medical services to underinsured and uninsured residents in Fitchburg, passed four to one. Grant from Waste Management in the approximate amount of $10,000. Betterment reimbursement to support efforts to improve and add trash receptacles on Main Street and other areas if funds allow, that was unanimous. Transfer of $85,000 from Police Personal Services Patrol to three other accounts, Police Personal Services Overtime, Police Auto Repair, and Building Repair, that was unanimous. Transfer of $300,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings to water system improvements for upgrades to the pump station near the industrial park, unanimous. $70,000 from Water Enterprise Overtime to a number of other Water Enterprise accounts, just to balance the books at the end of the year, that was unanimous. $90,000 from Wastewater East Personal Services Operators to Wastewater East Overtime, again, just balancing things out at the end of the year, that was unanimous. Fund, expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Disaster Relief Fund in the amount of approximately $1.14 million to repair damage caused by the severe flooding last summer. Most of this will be backfilling expenditures that we've already incurred, but some of it, I understand, is also forward-looking. That was unanimous. $6,589.20 charged against TNC per ride assessment, credited to DPW capital expenses for the purpose of road repaving, that was unanimous. Mema grant, $107,000.5 for the evaluation of flooding problems downtown and recommended measures to reduce that flooding, that was unanimous. Transfer from Snow and Ice Plow and Blades to Snow and Ice Overtime, approximately $49,000, Some other fund shifting within accounts in DPW, which I'm not going to get into all details of unless someone really wants me to, that was unanimous. Transfer from CDBG block grants and administration to parks and playgrounds in the amount of approximately $9,000, unanimous. And approximately $3.6 thousand transferred from CDBG Year 47, ADA parking improvements, to CDBG Year 50 sidewalk accessibility, that was unanimous.
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second.
Motion and second, to accept the report of Finance Committee. If there is no objection, all right, it is unanimous. We have one, two, three, four items going to Finance. I do have a request for suspension on 140. This is part of our standard quarterly transfer from the city to FATV for the PEG access funding. This is the same thing we approve once every three or four months. Can I entertain a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and second for suspension, any objection? Seeing none, it is before us. Do I have a motion on the?
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second.
I have a motion and second, to accept 14024. Any objection? It is approved. 137 through 13924 will stand referred to the Finance Committee. Next, I have 14124, an order that, to adopt, an order to adopt the enclosed order of taking to acquire temporary and permanent easements along Railroad Street, Sawyer Passway, and Main Street. If there is no objection, I will waive the specific measurements, the reading of the specific measurements. Total amount of $167,400, $400, and further authorize the mayor to enter into an easement agreement with Unitil and a lease with the Monmouth Regional Transit Authority. All of the foregoing for general municipal purposes, specifically the construction and operation of the Twin City Rail Trail. And this is a request for suspension.
Oh. Some move.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is suspended. I would like to entertain a motion to amend the la, the end of the order from Twin City Rivers, from Twin Rivers to Twin City.
Some moved.
Some moved.
Any, I have a motion and second, any objections to the amendment? All right, it passes, and the matter is before us. Attorney Mead, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
I'm happy to answer any questions or do, I'll just do a brief overview. So the council already approved the funding, which was larger, there were two of the property holders who are not, we're not having to pay for the takings. Unitil donated the value of their easement, and MART is going into a long-term lease and not charging the city for that. So that's why there's a difference in what was originally approved in this value. Otherwise, the, it's exactly what we presented to you a month and a half ago. We'll do the, you'll, if you pass this this evening, the mayor will then execute the order of taking, we'll record it, then we'll send the notices out to the property owners, of which there are six owners on eight parcels, so there's not a huge number of owners here. And then thereafter, Mass DOT will affirm the right-of-way, and they will then certify that to Federal Highway. And once Federal Highway approves, the goal is to go out to bid in August to start the project.
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second.
I have a motion and second. I, Attorney Mead, this doesn't require any special vote, does it?
It's a two-thirds, so if you.
Two-thirds, okay.
They're unanimous.
Do I have any objection? All right, it passes unanimously. Last, we have 124, which is the final reading of the loan order for $1,400,000 for the purchase of the ladder truck. We have had this before us before, obviously, we've approved it before. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Mr. President, one quick question. I just want to make sure I understand, I know, I don't want to waste people's time. We're going to try to pay for this the way we were the last time, right? Make sure we don't have to borrow any money at all?
Yes, from what I understood, I told Chief Suarez he didn't need to be here this evening because we had already voted this once, but from what I understand, the goal is going to be to not have to actually spend this, but we're authorizing a loan so that we can be certain that they don't cancel our order for this truck, given the very, very long lead time.
Just want to make sure I understand it too the same way you did. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to, sorry? To accept this loan order in its final reading, do I have any objections? Seeing none, it is unanimous, and that concludes our business for the evening.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second, seeing no objection. Counselor Brochman, are you objecting?
No, 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 no.
Seeing no objection, one of these days I'll get one, but not tonight. We are returned.